Good evening. This is the special meeting for September 9th, 2014, and it's now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Henderson?
Here.
Mrs. Neese?
Here.
Dr. Krupp?
Here.
Dr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Ziegler?
Here.
At this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for a member of our BPS family, Denise Johnson, who recently passed away. Ms. Johnson had been a teacher at Pinewood Elementary. Thank you. Our thoughts are with her family during this very difficult time. Michelle Irwin, Director of District Communications, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson, and members of the board. On this evening's agenda, we have one resolution proclamation, one presentation, eighteen consent items, six information items, one staff report, along with board member and superintendent reports. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. There is one recognition of visitors' guest deletion, item V5, on the 2014 Principal Achievement Award for Outstanding Leadership and Outstanding Assistant Principal Achievement Award. One consent revision, item F10, on the cost report for fiscal year 2013-14. One information addition, item H26, on policy review 1,000s, 3,000s, 4,000s, 6,000s, 7,000s, and one information deletion, item H27, on the 2014-2015 charter applications recommendations for denial or approval.
What are the wishes of the board?
To approve.
Moved by Dr. Krupp, seconded by Dr. Murray. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Motion carries five to zero. That brings us to the administrative staff recommendation portion. Dr. Bingley.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. And while there are not any administrative staff recommendations for the board to act on this evening, we have several members here with us that were approved over the summer. And with the board's permission, we would like to recognize and congratulate these individuals since they've all started, so they're really tired, and this will allow them to get on home and get some rest. So first, we would like to congratulate Michael Alba on his reclassification transfer from the position of Assistant Principal 12-month at Cocoa Beach Junior-Senior High School to the position of Principal at Vieira High School, which was effective on July 1, 2014. So, Michael, as is tradition, we want all of you to tell us how happy you are to be in your new role and introduce anybody that you brought with you.
Well, thank you and good evening. I would like to thank the board, Dr. Bingley, and the hiring committee for giving me this incredible opportunity to be the principal at Vieira High School. I'm very excited about that opportunity and continue to work with our faculty, our students, and our staff to continue to build upon the tradition of excellence at Vieira High School. I would also like to recognize my wife, Melissa, and thank her for the many years of support over the last eighteen years in education, and without her support, I certainly would not be standing here this evening. But thank you and have a good night.
And next, we will congratulate Wes Harold for his reclassification transfer from the position of teacher at Quest Elementary to the position of Assistant Principal 10-month at Williams Elementary, which became effective August 11, 2014. Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley and the board. I appreciate the opportunity, the hiring committee as well, and Chris Reed for giving me the chance to work with the amazing staff at Williams and a great community, and just looking forward to a wonderful year and continuing the tradition that they have set there as well of excellence. And I have my parents here as well this evening, and a wonderful wife and kids at home that allow me to do what I need to do. So, thank you.
I'm sure they're watching at home. Where are your parents? Do they stand up?
They're calling.
Oh, yeah, hey. Thank, congratulations. From the north area, we have Kevin, I want to make sure Kevin, I'm pronouncing this right, Biotanowitz.
Close.
Is it, well, okay. Butanowitz?
Bu.
Biotanowitz, I'm sorry, said Bingley, who was appointed as 10-month Assistant Principal at Jackson Middle School on August 11, 2014. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. Thank you to the board. I also want to thank Dr. Reinhardt, DJ Cornell, and my principal, Anitha Jones. I'm very happy to be here. I was a transfer over from Orange County, and I tried for about a year to get into the pool, and very happy to be out here. I was living in Titusville for about three years, so I had a big summer, bought a house in Titusville, got a new job in Titusville, and I was married to my lovely wife, Sally, who's here today. So, thank you.
Wow, that was a big summer. Bought a house, huh? No, I'm just kidding. A little levity. We would also like to congratulate Molly Vega for her reclassification transfer to Principal of Merritt Island High School from Principal of Hoover Middle School, effective August 1, 2014. Molly, welcome and welcome again.
Thank you. I'd first of all like to thank Dr. Mullins for his leadership and support over the last several years, also Dr. Reinhardt for bringing me back home to Mustangs, and for the warm welcome I received from the community, and look forward to doing things island-style.
Someone told me that's wearing neon yellow, but I don't know where I got that from. We also want to congratulate Keith Barton on his reclassification transfer from teacher on assignment at Palm Bay High to Assistant Principal 10-month at Cocoa Beach Junior-Senior High School, effective August 27, 2014. Mr. Barton.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Bingley and the board, along with the people that helped me get here, Mr. Thomas, Ms. Weibel, Ms. Schuler, Greg Rubik, who's not here, Mr. Fahey, and my parents behind me, Hugh and Peggy Barton, and then Mr. Cool for taking a chance on me. I appreciate it.
Want to also recognize Zachary Roddenberry for his reclassification transfer from the position of teacher at University Park Elementary to the position of Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Elementary, effective August 11, 2014. Mr. Roddenberry.
Dr. Bingley and the board, I'd like to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to be the Assistant Principal at Palm Bay Elementary. I'd like to also thank Anna Diaz and Dr. Mullins, along with Tiffany Gilbert, for selecting me from a field of highly qualified candidates. Along those lines, I'd also like to thank Bill Svensson and Donna Ensminger from University Park Elementary for giving me the ample opportunity, ample leadership opportunities there to be recognized, also my wife, Jessica, and my daughter Eloise, who are not here this evening due to having too much fun in the garden. So, thank you, guys.
And last, but certainly not least, we want to congratulate Lena Weibel for her reclassification transfer from the position of Assistant Principal 12-month at Palm Bay High to the position of Principal at Hoover Middle, effective August 27, 2014. Ms. Weibel.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley, and thank you to the board for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank Ms. Vega for turning over an amazingly organized school and for all of her help through our transition, the Hoover community and faculty who have just welcomed me so openly there, my Palm Bay family, and especially Mr. John Thomas, who's here with me tonight, for all of his support and encouragement and allowing me to grow as a leader in his school. You know, we've been together for nine years, so this is a pretty tough break for us. I also like to thank my friends, my book club friends. Ladies, thank you for always encouraging me, challenging me, and pushing me to be the best administrator and person that I can be. And of course, last but not least, my husband, my biggest fan, my husband of 27 years, Don, for his patience and his understanding and never complaining about having to share me or my time with my school family. So, thank you.
We truly do thank all of you for stepping up and taking important leadership roles in this district and ultimately working hard for a lot of children. I always say every meeting when we do this, I do thank those of you who attended with our new administrators and those watching at home, because they know, and I know, and all of us know, that it takes a lot of love and patience and understanding to allow all of us and all of you to do what you do. And so, on behalf of Brevard Public Schools, and again, more importantly, on behalf of the children that they will serve, we thank you for that love and patience. And board, thank you for allowing us to do this early, so that, I think I speak for the board, that if you leave, we won't be offended. We understand there's a lot going on, but anyone else? Congratulations.
Thank you. And congratulations. That brings us to the recognition of visitors, guests, or staff.
There are no recognition items this evening.
Are there any resolutions and proclamations? Dr. Bingley.
Ms. Henderson, item C5 is to proclaim September 15 through the 19, 2014, as Florida Breakfast Week. Michelle Irwin will read the proclamation.
Whereas for over 30 years, the National School Breakfast Program has contributed to the physical and academic development of Florida students, and whereas studies show that children who live in families that experience hunger are more likely to have lower math scores, face an increased likelihood of repeating a grade, receive more special education services, show increased errors, have slower memory recall, and are more likely to be overweight, and whereas a school breakfast is often the only morning meal available to many children and therefore represents a vital part of the initiative to improve the education skills of students and psychological well-being, and whereas studies show students participating in the school breakfast program have improved attendance and punctuality, increased attention and memory recall, and improved math reading and standardized test scores, and whereas research shows that children who have school breakfast eat more fruits, drink more milk, and consume less saturated fat, and whereas the school breakfast program promotes the increased consumption of high-quality nutritious agricultural products from Florida, and whereas the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services Food, Nutrition, and Wellness, in conjunction with other health and nutrition organizations, is dedicated to the educational and physical success of Florida students by creating public awareness of the impact of hunger on a child's ability to learn now. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Brevard County, Florida hereby proclaims the week of September 15 through 19, 2014, as Florida School Breakfast Week.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Moved by Dr. Murray, seconded by Dr. Krupp. Is there any discussion? Motion carries five to zero. Dr. Bingley, do we have any presentations on tonight's agenda?
We do, Ms. Henderson. What I'd like to interject, as Dr. Schaefer has come into the podium, however, I was going to do it in my superintendent comments, but following our resolution proclamation, I do want to point out that we, Brevard will be beginning its seventh annual Food for Thought, Food Drive, on September the 15th and through the 24th, and as most of the board knows, and perhaps the community, we have done this for seven years, as our food pantries really take a hit when our kids and our families are accessing them more in the summer, because we are not able to provide some of those breakfasts and lunches, although we're doing better at that even in the summer. And I know, Mr. Ziegler, you've been involved in a lot of that, in Project Hunger and some other things. So, I did want to throw that out there that I thought is good, following that resolution, that we'll once again be stepping into the breach to try to bring those canned goods and foods and other items that our families need to our food shelters, and we're very proud of that effort. Now, thank you. Having said that, Ms. Henderson and members of the board, item D6 is a presentation on the new school grade. Some while back, our board asked if Dr. Schaefer can bring some sense to this. She's going to try to do that in a relatively short period of time. So, Dr. Karen Schaefer, Director of Accountability and Testing and Evaluation, will provide us with information on the new school grade process.
Good evening to the board, and that's quite a challenge, bringing sense to this, but we'll do the best we can, as we've been trying to do all along, trying to bring some understanding of all these new changes, and I get to say once again, it's an exciting time to be an educator in Florida. So, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what we're going to see as school grade changes. You may recall that last summer, the past, not this past summer, but the previous one, one of the charges that the governor put out to a group of folks was to come up with some suggestions for how we can improve the school grade. And the big recommendations that came out of that committee was, we want to have something, a school grade system that's going to represent stability and clarity. Those are two things that kept coming out over and over, because that means that they must have recognized that things were not very stable in the school grade world for the last couple of years, and that it was anything but clear. So, this is an effort on the behalf of the DOE and the recommendations of these folks who got together the past summer, to come up with something that would help with these things. And there is going to be a transition, and one of the reasons that we need to have a new school grade is because we have a new assessment system that we're putting in place this year. Last time I was here, we talked about the assessment system, and so now the school grade system is an opportunity to go in and do some restructuring, at the same time they're going to have to accommodate these new grades that we have. So, our students will be taking that new assessment for the first time this year, and once those tests are taken, primarily in the spring, we're talking about spring testing, then the state will set some student performance level expectations. In other words, we're really not going to be able to score those tests right off the bat, because it's going to take a little while for us to, the state to figure out how to score them. So, to think about how this looks in a flow, the first thing we did last, we gave the spring test last spring for the last time with all of our FCAT assessments, we did get our summer grades. Number three on this chart is when we, in the spring, we will give the new assessments. Number four, they will begin the standard-setting process in the summer of 2015 to start establishing what the cut scores are for those new assessments. In the fall, then, what they will be doing is giving us some baseline grades, and the school grades will be released sometime in the fall, they're looking probably as late as perhaps November, to release those fall grades. Then in the spring of 2016, we'll give the assessment for the second time, and school grades then will be released during the summertime. So, that's their flow chart, how they expect for this to happen. Couple of things just to note, that during this transition, a couple of things that won't change, school recognition funding program will not change, and one of the important things, you heard me say, that they were not going to be establishing the cut scores for the tests the kids take in the spring until the summer. However, we have two grade levels where this is going to be, could be problematic, and so that would be grade three, because in grade three, students have to be able to pass the FCAT reading test to be considered for promotion, and in grade 10, it is a graduation requirement. So, the state will be doing, I get to use my good word again, equal percentile linking. They'll be linking the old scores from the FCATs to these tests, and so that the percentage of students who scored level five on last year's FCAT will be the percent that will score level five on this year's FSA. So, they'll do that linking so that we can get scores immediately, before the end of the school year, actually, before students are dismissed in May, in grades three and 10, for promotion purposes and for graduation purposes. Another thing that will happen as a result of having new school grades is differentiated accountability is determined. Students who get additional assistance from the state, what they call struggling schools, because of this change in the school grade, and DA is determined, a school's participation in the DA process is determined by their grades, the school grade that they receive. But because we will not be receiving anything but what they're calling a baseline grade for this year, the schools who are currently in DA status as a result of this past year or previous year's grades will continue to receive those services from the state. There will be no new schools be placed into DA in 2014-15, and so for two years, 14-15 and 15-16, those schools will continue through that DA services process with the state, and it won't be until the 16-17 school year that schools may be removed from that DA list, or additional schools added to the DA list. So, in their efforts to unmuddle the school, the school grade system, which is one of their words, that they talk about, what we have were provisions that overcomplicated and muddled the meaning of the school grade. One of the things that helped to overcomplicate and muddle it was, as the school grade system evolved with going from FCAT to FCAT 2.0, and then introducing EOCs, and then having change in standards for writing, et cetera, et cetera, one of the things that they did was they added bonus factors or extra weighting to several of the components. In this new school grade, they're taking all of those extra weighting components out. So, there will not be any bonus points for the super learning gains, there will not be any high school retake bonus points, and no bonus points for the annual growth on those high school components. So, in an effort to unmuddle, all the bonus stuff goes away. But to balance that out, so do all of the penalties. All of those things that have been penalties that they've introduced over time with the school grading system will disappear. There will be no penalty for having fewer than 50% of the lowest 25% showing learning gains, no penalties for participation, no penalties for the at-risk graduation rate. So, the bonus points go away, so do the penalties, to clear it out, so that it's a very, to add clarity, to keep the system clear. Another thing that will change is how they're going to assign the points for establishing a school grade. Right now, there's a different number of points required to earn an A at the elementary level, the middle school level, the high school level, and even combination schools have their own points. And that's construed as being confusing for the general public and for many educators as well, and to not know what an A is based on. So, what they will be doing with the new school grade, it will be based purely on the percentage of total points possible, and they will establish what an A, B, C, D, or an F school grade is, based on those percentages. That is not something that has been established yet, there are some committees working on that, and they will make a recommendation to the State Board of Education on what percentages will represent those different grades. But it's going to be a clear system, a percent will represent the entire grade, and then they will attach a letter grade to those. So, just a brief review on this, no penalties, no bonus points, we'll have things based on the percentage of the total points possible. One of the interesting things on this is if there are, if there is a component that a school doesn't have enough students to constitute it. In the past, for some of our smaller schools, they may not have had enough students to fill the science school grade category, and what they would do is take the district average. Well, that's going to go away. If that mean, in the future, if they don't have enough students to constitute a science grade, they just won't get a science grade, and their grade will be averaged on the number of components that they have. So, instead of dividing by eight, they'll divide by seven. So, it is a change in how they're going to look at a lot of different things in that regard. This slide talks about that, that they have to have at least 10 students. That's a reduction, because it was before, in the past, they've had to have at least 35, and so that is a change. So, some of the different things. So, to get, cut to the quick, to show you what the differences are, this is the old school grade model for elementary schools, and what you see on this model going away are the bonuses, the penalties. You notice that there's an X through writing. Writing doesn't really go away. It goes away as a school grade component, but you might remember from our conversation last time about the new testing, that writing is now a part of the ELA. So, that's why writing goes away as a separate and distinct part of the school grade. So, when you do that, the new elementary school grade model will look like this, based on ELA, which is the English Language Arts for Achievement Learning Gains and the learning gains of the lowest 25%, same categories of achievement for math, there will be assigned. So, instead of eight categories, because they've done away with writing, there are now seven categories. In middle schools, you see the same things that go away, and what's left for the middle school grade are those same achievement categories for ELA and math and science. This year, the civics EOC will count as a part of the social studies grade on the middle schools, and the acceleration where schools receive points for the students who are in high school EOC courses or in industry certifications, that's been a little bit revised. It does say the percentage of students who pass the EOCs, that would be performance on the test, but we have been assured that it's not just based, going to be based on performance, but it will also be based as a part of that calculation. It will embed the participation, because it would be very easy for me to put my five best students in an EOC course and get a 100%, and the state is smart enough to know that. So, somehow, they will have a formula that will include the participation as a part of that calculation. Our high school grades model changes in many of the same ways. There are some changes to acceleration, they've taken out a couple of the pieces of that, graduation rate, they've taken out a couple of pieces of that, and they have eliminated the college readiness, because they believe that that's included in the other elements. So, what is left are the acceleration, I'm sorry, are the achievement categories, social studies, which includes US history. The graduation rate is now just one graduation rate, there is no graduation rate for the at-risk students anymore, and there is no five-year graduation rate. So, it's reduced to one, and that's the federal graduation rate that all schools are required to use. Again, with the acceleration success, which is the percent of students who earn college credit on the accelerated courses like APIB and ACE, as well as industry certifications, again, the law talks about it as being a performance measure, but we've been assured that the participation part of that will be included in the formula as well. School improvement, some of our alternative schools do receive school improvement ratings rather than school grades, and basically what they've done there is they've changed the rating system to talk about being commendable, maintaining, and unsatisfactory. So, they have relabeled those. There are lots of folks out there working on the details, because even though we do have a basic structure for school grade, there are lots and lots of things that still have to be determined, like what constitutes a learning gains under this new system, that we don't really know that yet. So, there are several different committees that are meeting as advisory committees throughout this year, who will be making recommendations to the DOE, who will go before the state board, and they will then vote on the detail part of this, and so the details will come from the state board. One little piece of information that's not included in your packet, because I just received this information yesterday, is what will constitute the district grade, because in addition to schools receiving grade, we also receive a district grade. Brevard receives a grade every year. In the past, that has only been based on the achievement level components, the math and the reading and the science with the lowest 25%. But now, what they've done is they've said for your district grade, it will include all of the elements for all of the grades. So, you'll see included in this district grade, the high school elements for acceleration and graduation rate, and the middle school component for acceleration with the EOC courses. So, it has become all-encompassing of all of the categories now for elementary, middle school, and high school, rather than just based on those elementary school components. So, like I said, it's an exciting time to be an educator in Florida, and we will keep you informed as we find out more about what this school grade is going to look like, and there will definitely be lots of changes and new things as the year progresses.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Does the board, I think, somebody has some questions?
Has they done anything to ensure that districts who have middle schoolers that are taking high school math classes aren't double-testing and taking the eighth-grade math to falsely raise those scores? You know, we didn't do that here.
We did not.
But some counties did. Is there anything that's going to address that?
Excellent question. Actually, there is another part of the law that addressed that, and so they have now made it statewide, that the student will take the math course that they are associ- they are associated, the math test that they are associated with. So we will now be on a level playing field. We did the right thing for kids, and now all districts are being forced to do the right thing for kids by not double testing those kids. And that's written into the legislation now.
Mr. Ziegler.
Please clarify, end-of-course exams are still being created. When will they be completed? Before the end of the year, before March, April?
Two, two different kinds of end-of-course exams. The kind of end-of-course exams that we're talking about that are related to school grade are state end-of-course exams. And there are only five of those. That's the algebra test, the geometry test, biology, U.S. history, and civics. Those are the only state end-of-course exams that impact school grade.
I thought I read today algebra two.
And algebra two. And algebra two. Thank you very much. And algebra two. Six.
Please, keep adding them.
And six, algebra two. Thank you, Karen.
No problem.
So the district end-of-course exams, which are not related to school grade but are related to other things like the teacher evaluation system, we are in the process of developing those. And we have this year to develop, to develop some of them for some purposes, but for next year, we have to have them all developed for the purposes of teacher evaluation.
Okay. And as you said at the beginning of this, that none of this has been baseline, so they haven't been normed. How are they going to compare this to anything? It just seems to me like we're going down the same road as we went with grading systems before, and the outcome is completely unknown. But of course, our community and everybody is going to look at them like, like this is gospel, yet there's going to be, the way I see it, there's going to be no meaning to these grades. I think the Commissioner of Education even commented that this may not even be reliable grades at the end of this year?
Much discussion about that, for sure. And at the meeting that we attended last week with the Department of Education, a lot of discussion on that with lots of recommendations, I know, from different organizations, including fads, and about, let's wait a year before we attach that grade to, even if they give us a calculation of what the percentage of points that we received, about whether or not to attach a letter grade for this first year. As it is right now, that's what we're being told. But I will tell you that there is a lot of pressure from communities about not attaching a letter grade to this first year while they're still figuring it out.
While they're experimenting on our children.
Well, and the impact is that because we don't really, because A, it's the first year we've been giving the test, it's a new test based on new standards, and what will those grades mean? And even though they don't have any impact, it's supposed to be a held harmless year for schools, when the grades are put out to the community, it's not a held harmless situation.
Exactly. You also mentioned that a high-performing district can't fall from grace based on these grades. What about reachieving high performance? Will this be a non-inclusive year for that calculation? And therefore, it's going to take even longer for us to reclaim, which for those who are listening, we lost our high performance primarily because of one school that got an F even though their FCAT scores went up based on the new grading system. This just seems like another mess like that. But what about reachieving high performance?
Excellent question. Don't know the answer to that one, but something we can look into.
Any other questions from the board? Dr. Bingley.
Dr. Schaefer, we don't certainly want to muddy the works right now. But she and I had a lengthy conversation the other day. The math double testing is gone. That's a good thing, you know. However, there are, there is the potential, which one was it, Karen, the civics?
For U.S. history and biology.
Right. I don't want to go into it tonight. We're going to keep monitoring, but there seems to be another May in there on that, that we are absolutely bamboozled that they might go, you know, potentially have that happen again, albeit in a probably more limited scale. But we, we will keep you posted on that.
More information on that to come.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Once again, you've completely confused us.
Thank you. Mission accomplished.
Is there only one? Ms. Neese, do you have a question?
No, I was just trying to.
Okay. All right. Okay. This brings us to public comment. The maximum allotted time for each speaker is three minutes. Clarification of information presented, and answers to questions specific to district business and educational matters will be posted on the school board's website under the section called "For the Record." Please speak into the microphone and state your name. First is Kinley Nagel, and then Karen Clark, and then Vanessa Skipper.
She didn't hear you.
I'm Kinley Nagel. I've been here before, educating people regarding learning disabilities in my research, which states our children aren't born with learning disabilities. Our environment is causing the disabilities. When adults bully adults and we're too afraid to speak about it, our children know to be afraid. It leads to learning disabilities and mental illness and the violence we see in our schools. I have a poem that I've written, and I'd like to share with you. "In loving you, I let go of all I know. I'm just as I should be, calm and still in knowing that no one else can be me. No, no need to do more to be all that I am. I am enough, just who I am, where I am. I am enough, just me. I must be me, with or without others by my side. Confident, I choose to lead. In your hearts, I will succeed. I stand for you, my children, my students, my passion. I am courage, I am strength, I am beauty, I am truth. I can't stop being me, loving you, so be free. I listen to my voice, which tells me what only I can know. I quiet my breathing, my breath. I quiet my thinking, my thoughts. Still, I find my answers within, breathing in, breathing out. I create life, I create love. I forgive, I let go. I find my strength, which hides only within the unknown alone. I choose strength, I choose love. I choose you, I choose me. I choose faith, I choose hope. Only by letting go of all I know will I find me, will I know. As I let go of all I know, my fear, my will, I find peace in loving me, loving you." As Brad Pitt says, "You're on your own in this country." And we have a country, which is the pain of our country, can be heard in our children's silent cries. We need to take action and become aware of what's happening in our society to our children and stop the adults who are bullying other adults." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nagel. Karen Clark, Vanessa Skipper, and then Debbie Sandstrom.
My name is Karen Clark. I have an eighth grader at Central Middle School. We are overtesting our students. The tests are flawed as they have two answers that are correct, with one answer being more correct. More correct according to whom? I could argue the merits of each correct answer. These tests are secret, and we cannot challenge the test results. We are spending an overabundance of our precious education dollars enriching the test makers. Too much emphasis is placed on these tests, with education dollars following schools with students who test well. I am a parent, not a teacher. I'm not sure who came up with the cockamamie idea of tying teachers' pays to test results, but this is a terrible idea. I can't tell you how tired I am of hearing, "We have to hold teachers accountable." When are we going to start holding parents accountable? We are losing experienced teachers due to Brevard Public Schools not valuing their teachers. A prime example of how you are not valuing teachers is that six of seven was in last year's contract for one year. This year, when six of seven was brought up at bargaining, six of seven was not even discussed. As Brevard Public Schools said, the schedules are set for the year, and this issue was pushed to the side. That was such a slap in the face, and I feel that you were being dishonest, saying six of seven was for one year, but were unwilling to change the schedules this year, effectively forcing the teachers into six of seven. This is why so many teachers are leaving. To go back to overtesting our students, I feel you're grasping at using the idea of parents' rights to opt out in lieu of actually addressing the true problem. I feel there are six problems that need to be addressed regarding testing. All testing is not bad. Just using testing as a sledgehammer to force all students into the mole is not the answer. Not allowing reasonable opt-out modifications to testing serves no one. For kids with IEPs, a 504, some portfolios, they all need to be taken into account. End-of-course writing exams in all courses is not necessary. Paying Utah to test-run our tests is ludicrous, as our student body is much different than their student body. Rushing into Florida standards was ill-planned. When did you train your teachers on the new standards? The week before school started? Two right answers for each question is not beneficial. The previous system that taught kids to regurgitate facts without any real in-depth understanding of the concept did not serve our students well. The new Florida standards require the students to have an in-depth understanding of the concepts and the ability to support their ideas from the text. This increased rigor is possibly an attainable goal, but not within this school year. I would think possibly 20 to 30% of students will pass these new standards. A more gradual implementation would more greatly serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, there's Karen Clark. Vanessa Skipper, Debbie Sandstrom, Darcy Addo.
Good evening. I'm here, Vanessa Skipper. I'm here as a parent and a teacher and a member of the Executive Board of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I have a son who attends Merritt Island High School and a son who attends Mylan Elementary. I appreciate, sorry, I appreciate the conversation that you guys have already started about testing. And I know, Ms. Henderson, you guys have talked at length about the amount that our students go through and that we need to cut it down. We have a lot more work to do. We, sorry, we have a lot more work to do because I've looked at testing calendars around the district, and we still have 80 of 180 days of testing. And that's a hard question to do because we come in here, we diagnose like lions, and I feel like we prescribe like lambs. How do we do it when we have a toxic culture of testing that's been pushed down by our legislatures and our governor? We need to stand up to the state, and I think that's something that we can do together. I think that's something that we can do as teachers, parents, school board, district. We have two more sessions. We've got the session in the fall, we've got the session in the spring. I want to talk about accountability. It's a state of being answerable and liable. The speaker before me talked about tying teachers' pay into tests. We have EOCs that haven't even been created yet, and I have teachers that are going to have their pay tied into that EOC, and they are testing those classes now. That's wrong. It's not accountability, and it's not transparency. And we need to tell the state that that's wrong. I'd like to pose some questions for the board. Question one, if I gave a test and the student failed it, and that student's parents came to me and asked me to see that test, and I refused, would you, as a school board of Brevard County, support my refusal as a teacher? Of course you wouldn't. So why do we allow the state to refuse to give us copies of the test, to refuse to give us answers to this test so that we can guide those children? As a teacher and as a parent, I know what my children need, and I know what my students need, because I see it every day when I'm walking around in the classroom and I'm having a conversation with them, and I'm asking them what they need, and I'm seeing their answer on their paper, and I'm guiding them to be more successful. Teachers don't not want accountability. Of course we want accountability. My classroom is open. Anybody can come in at any time, talk to me, talk to my students, see what I do on a daily basis. And so I am asking you, as the school board of Brevard County, as the district, we, our mission is to serve every student with excellence as a standard. And the state is making it so difficult to do that, and we need to say that that's not okay. It's not okay that we don't have a baseline for assessments yet. Look, I have no clarity on that testing. I went through the slideshow before I came here. Maybe it's because I graduated from Merritt Island before FCAT testing. I don't know. But I know that you, as the board, would not support me as a teacher if I started my classroom year out.
Thank you.
And didn't have a baseline for my students. Thank you.
Ms. Sandstrom, Darcy Addo, and John Craig.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Debbie Sandstrom from Astronaut High School. I would first like to say thank you. Thank you for working so hard with the bargaining teams from both sides to get us a contract that could be presented and approved so overwhelmingly by the teachers this early in the year. Was it everything everybody wanted? No. But with collaboration and respecting the process, we were able to address the issues and come to an agreement on a contract that was passable. Next, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Mike. Thanks for your years of service to the students of Brevard, as a teacher, administrator, and as a board member. I was proud to work for you always, even if I didn't always agree with you. You always have had the best interests of the students of Brevard County in mind. Thank you for that. Finally, I would like to talk about the excessive testing that is going on in our schools. This is not anything new to any of you, as Mrs. Henderson pointed out last year. We found out that this year, 80 of 180 days were testing, and that does not, then that is just state and district testing. That doesn't even include fair testing. This is, there is not one test on any, this is not, there is not one test on any one day that can tell us what a student is all about. Nor should any test, nor should any one test be the only measure of a student. If these tests had been around when my son and daughter were in high school, neither one would have graduated. My daughters took honors English, honors social studies, honors science classes, and math for the barely breathing classes through high school. She did well getting As and Bs and a few Cs because she did well in her classes, worked hard, participated in classes, did all of her assignments, could answer all of the questions when asked, but did miserably on tests. She took the SAT, and her combined score was a 660. She was devastated. She passed the HSC, HSCT and graduated, just barely. But she's a very successful nanny now. We need to tell Tallahassee now that testing is not for everybody. We need to let Tallahassee know that this does not give us a true picture of the entire student, that testing 80 out of 180 days is too much. We need to find ways to evaluate the entire student, not testing them 44% of the time that they are in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy Addo, John Craig, and Virginia Zelnarsky.
Hi. My name is Darcy Addo. For the record, I'm a National Board Certified Teacher. I have a master's degree in teacher leadership and urban education. I'm certified in middle grades English, English 6 through 12, ESOL 6 through 12. I'm also a PhD candidate in leadership policy and change in education. Separate from all of that, I'm a mom, and I'm here speaking as a mother of two elementary school children today. As a parent, I hold a core belief that many of you probably share, which is that every child is unique and learns at his or her own variable rate. That's why we charge teachers with differentiating instruction, and we hold teachers to a very high standard of being experts in their field. I trust my kids' classroom teachers, and I hold them to the highest standard as experts in pedagogy and in practice. We have excellent teachers in Brevard County, and I choose public education for my kids because I believe in the quality and the expert practice that our teachers have. I trust them to teach, and I also trust them to assess. I think it's important that we have this conversation about opting out, knowing that opt-out parents don't believe in opting out of assessment altogether. We believe in the quality of classroom teachers, and we believe in classroom teachers as being experts in instruction as well as being experts in assessment. That's important in this conversation about assessment because classroom teachers are experts. Opting out is about breaking the cycle of complacency. That's the part of the conversation that I don't think we always have. For too many years, we've been having these groaning conversations among ourselves about how this test thing is out of control, and we all know that it is. We've commiserated among ourselves about the horror stories and anecdotes about so-and-so who has test anxiety. I did it too. I was a middle school teacher here in Brevard County for seven years. I lived it, I saw it, I proctored the test, I hated it. I lived it, I saw it, I proctored the test, I hated it, but it was part of the job. We didn't really feel like we had much control, but as parents, we're not powerless, and that's the great thing. Opting out is about giving voice to parents. It's about taking back the narrative from Pearson and everyone else who's hijacked public education. It's about saying now that we have a voice and that corporate America is not going to hijack public education and say that public education is failing, because amazingly, public education is not failing. They said in A Nation at Risk that public education was failing back in nineteen eighty-three, but it's not. That's why we're doing so great and that's why we're all here now saying it's not failing, it's doing just fine, and we believe in our classroom teachers, we believe in the quality, and we believe in their ability to do what they do best. So I think we can change this whole narrative if parents are empowered to have those conversations with their classroom teachers and we reframe this whole thing. We don't need to have this, this conversation right now about what the board needs to do, but I do think that all parents need to know that they do have that choice. The Supreme Court has upheld that choice over and over again about parents' ability to do its best for their kids, and I think that's the main message right now, that it is a choice that we have and that we can make.
Thank you. John Craig, Virginia Zalnarsky, and Robert White. Mr. Craig.
Hey, very good evening. My name is John Craig, and while I'm a candidate for school board, I stand before you tonight as a parent, concerned about the expansion and effects of high-stake testing in our public schools. See, my son is an ESE eighth grader who has defied the cognitive prognosis of his disorder and excelled in mainstream classrooms. In fact, he was inducted into the Junior National Honor Society just at the end of last year, and his classroom success is a direct result of personalized and relevant instruction provided by dedicated teachers who recognize his individual potential and adjust their teaching to take advantage of his strengths. What my son is not good at is completing multiple regimented tests, as evidenced by his extremely poor standardized scores. And this isn't isolated to students who learn differently, and it highlights the reason why so many parents and teachers recognize that it's time to stop excessive testing now. We simply cannot allow our teachers to be marginalized and our kids treated as a test group rather than the individuals that they are. A few months ago, this board expressed rightful concern when presented with a job description for a newly created program manager of assessment development position. The administration said such a position was necessary in order to comply with the large increase in mandated testing, and I applaud the board for pushing back then, and now I ask you to go a step further. See, Brevard is an education leader in Florida and always has been. Dr. Bingley rightly highlights the many areas where our teachers and our students excel as compared to others in the state, and now it's time for us to lead in this critical area. We, as a community, need to be proactive in finding a solution, but let's be pragmatic and not act on emotion and not just complain or wait to see what other counties might come up with, because we have incredible resources right here in Brevard, and they're ready to find the solutions that are best for our students. Teachers, administrators, parents, legislators, community business leaders, they stand ready to work because they know how serious this is. Let's listen to them and let's lead the effort to change testing requirements that we all agree are onerous and costly in so many ways. Already this year, my son's teachers are faced with rigid curriculum requirements that don't allow them to give him the same personalized learning environment that allowed him that great opportunity for success last year. And it's tests, whether state or district mandated, that are driving this, and we need to stop it. So let's let the teachers teach, let the students learn, because performance in the classroom is measured in so many ways besides just a battery of tests. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Virginia Zalnarsky, Robert White, and Azella Parker.
Hi. I have a question to ask the board. Last year sometime, I came to one of the school board meetings and it was, it was a discussion over the history book, the new history book that came out with thirty-six pages of Islam, and sprinkled throughout the rest of the book was a little Christianity, a little Judaism. Now, as I understood it, you were going to, or whoever does, add a pamphlet to that, and I never heard any more about it, but a day after that meeting or a couple days, there was an editorial in which this guy said, I forgot his name, he wrote and said that you can't add a pamphlet to some, to some book that's already written. I just want to know, whatever happened to that, that whole thing? I mean, did you take the history books away? I mean, there was never any publicity, there was not a word about it, and I was just curious, what happened? What happened to it? Did it, is it still there? Does anybody know?
Yes, Ms. Van Meter, could you talk to her unless you want to do it publicly?
Yeah, do it publicly.
Yeah, tell everybody here, because as far as I know, I ask other people, they don't know.
Okay, we're not going to do it right now, we'll do it at board reports, or at a report at the end. Okay?
Do what?
Finish what the speaker said.
I didn't.
No, no, I know. We're going to, finish what you're going to say.
That's what I was going to say. I'm asking, I didn't understand.
We're not going to answer from right here, right now, but Ms. Van Meter will be able to provide some answers at the end.
Well, will it be at least put in the newspaper or on the radio or something so, you know, everybody just doesn't forget about it?
It is on our website, yeah, okay.
I mean, you know, it's kind of irresponsible on your part.
It was in the paper and it was, there was a lot, okay.
Mr. White, Ms. Parker, and then Ms. Blumenberg.
Good evening. My name's Bob White, and I'm here on behalf of the Republican Liberty Caucus of Florida. And I was noting that Dr. Schaefer used the word exciting to refer to being involved in education in Florida at this time, and I can tell you that as a parent, a grandparent, a taxpayer, exciting might be a word that you would choose, but it certainly wouldn't be the only word that you would choose. You'd probably also use words like confounding, aggravating, frustrating, irritating. These are the words that spring to my mind when I think about this entire debate over public education in Florida in the year two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen, as we approach the next legislative session. As a member, as the chairman of the Republican Liberty Caucus of Florida, we were in Tallahassee this past year, spent a couple of days up there, went around, visited with various legislators and their aides, did in fact have a meeting with the Speaker-elect, Christopher Foley, in his office. One of our primary focuses of the trip was Common Core. We're opposed to it as an organization. We were there to support Representative Mayfield's bill, HB twenty-five, which when we got up there, we found out that it was, of course, dead on arrival, and it was dead on arrival specifically because the governor, the Senate President, and the House Speaker deemed it so. Now, that's where the power is in Tallahassee, and I don't think I'm telling you anything that you don't already know, but what I would say is this, you have a unique opportunity as the Brevard County School Board and as individual school board members. You have the Speaker-elect and the Senate President-elect representing parts of this county, and please do not assume that they are well-informed on the issue of Common Core and testing in Florida, because believe me when I tell you, they are not well-informed on these issues, and they need you to inform them. They need you to represent all of these parents and all of the teachers in your school system and educate them on what these issues are really doing to the morale of your teachers and what they're doing to our students and what they're doing to our parents. And if you will do that, hopefully you'll have a sympathetic ear, and I understand that this is a, this is frustrating for you as well as it is for the parents, okay, and for the teachers in your Brevard public school system, but it's your responsibility. It's your responsibility to take that initiative and push back. Eighty days of testing is obscene. It is just flat-out obscene. It cannot be justified under any, under any measure, and I would be willing to suggest to you that they don't know. The Senate President-elect and the House Speaker-elect probably don't know that that's what's being forced on the districts at the district level. So please, take advantage of this unique opportunity that you have to influence those two of the three most powerful people in the state of Florida. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Parker and Ms. Blumenberg.
First of all, I would like to applaud all educators, parents, grandparents, and everyone that cares about our children, and especially the board. If all of us in this room is for all children, whether color, sex, disability, why would anyone even think to come against the opportunity to take away underprivileged children the success? We, the parents, grandparents, and the community mentors are asking the board not to join the Florida School Board of Association. We're asking you not to. Teachers want raises. All our children want is an opportunity and leave the scholarships alone.
Thank you. Ms. Blumenberg.
I'm here about the Step Up for Students Scholarship. My children are under the scholarship. I have my oldest daughter, that's sixteen years old right now, and she, I asked them to write essays about how the, how this private school benefit them. My daughter said the teachers at Covenant are very helpful in understanding. Hold on, before I, she said attending private school helped her achieve more advanced education in a similar classroom setting, and she's able to receive more help from her teachers. Also, the private school teachers, again, are more understanding, and she feels like she's more prepared for college, which right now, she's taking class at Eastern, and she's maintaining, I'm hoping, I'm praying that she may pass over four-point-oh GPA, as well as she was chosen to do the, she's in the National Society of High School Scholars. And the private school is the one that helped my children to get to that level, because when I was in public school, I really didn't get much of help because I felt like the teachers, I don't know how it is now, but when I was in public school, the teachers were focusing more on the smarter students. And I noticed that some of the smarter students, they were getting, they were more, had more education because their parents were able to afford tutoring for them. My family, it was a struggle for them. We didn't have funding to be able to get extra tutoring and be able to achieve more, to be able to do good academically in school, but the scholarship has helped my children tremendously and helped me a lot to be able to see my children grow. My oldest daughter, I'm so proud of her, being the fact that she's taking college courses and she's, she's ready to pursue her dreams, so I'm hoping that y'all can basically leave the scholarships alone and that's it, sorry.
Thank you, and you did a fine job. I think the, the board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. Answers will be out on our website under "For the Record." I'm hearing some chatter up here. Is this really where you want to go at this time? Okay, Dr. Murray.
We're going to break protocol here, request, because I have things I need to say, and if we wait till the board reports, people are going to leave, and I want to address some of the comments. And I know when I was chair, I did not like to do this, but we did it a few times. What's, so I'll leave it to you, Madam Chairman.
I want someone to respond to about the history book thing and about the step up.
We're flirting with a dangerous trend here. We are definitely flirting with a dangerous trend. Let's get the two things out of the way. There is a presentation at the end. Several board members have information on testing and opting out. I have a presentation to do. If those people, if those people guarantee me they're going to stay until the entire meeting is over, we can wait, but I just don't want to lose the audience. If you want to do, you want step-up information and Ms. Van Meter. Ms. Van Meter, would you please come up and just answer this lady's questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
And what about the step-up?
They can respond to that.
You're going to do that? You're doing it. That's what you're saying?
That conjunction with FSP.
You're going to do it now or you're going to do it at the end? Because we don't have much on the agenda. Yes, we apologize for the last minute. Surprise.
In response to some of the questions about the World History Book, you know that each board member recommended two community members to serve on a committee to go page by page through the World History textbook. Based on the results of the committee's recommendations, there were seven lessons that were created to address what they thought might have been deficiencies in that World History textbook, and so those lessons were created. They were distributed electronically to every teacher in the district, and they're using those lessons as we speak in addition to the World History textbooks.
Okay. Dr. Murray.
And we did a presentation at the board as a summary, and I know that Mackenzie Ryan had an article in the newspaper too, so there was communication.
Yes, there was, okay.
Can you tell what date that people can access that meeting or not? Do you want to see that?
I'm really thinking, if I recall, it was somewhere around December, January. We had met probably seven or eight times with the committee, and I know we started it in September, and I'm pretty sure it was December or January.
Well, I think that what we can do is under "For the Record," we will put a link on our website under "For the Record" so that she may look that up, okay? Because that's where we'll put all of our responses.
And if folks have any questions at the break, I'll be here, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, great, thank you. And who do you want to talk to this step-up?
Do you want to go first? Let Dr. Murray go first. She wanted to speak. Superintendent has a question.
I don't know. What do you think? Should we? Do my presentation now or what?
I think now whether they're on.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. All right, we're going to move on with, we're going to take some things out of order here based on comments. So I just want to address the theme, I want to address the theme that we should be speaking with our legislators and whatnot. I have to tell you, in the eight years that I've been on this board, this board has spoken until we are purple in the face, not blue in the face, purple. Many of what you said about the testing frenzy, we agree with that, and we have been fighting that since I've been on the board. Right now, I'm involved with a state study that is looking at this problem statewide. Here is what I see as the problem, and I spoke about this publicly last week. We are five people. Our words to our delegation have gone nowhere. And I said at the time, what we need to do is fire up the voters and fire up the parents, because they are not listening to the sixty-seven boards throughout the state of Florida. Or the superintendents. Or the superintendents. They are listening to no one. And I'm going to stick my neck out here a little bit, but I think I can do that since I'm not going to be here in another month, okay? For this education sabotage to stop, there has to be a change in Tallahassee, and I mean a big, big change in Tallahassee. Brevard County people keep putting the very people in office that are voting for some of these things. We have to get smarter throughout the state. And also, as I mentioned a week or so ago in a private conversation, school districts are the largest employers in any community nationwide. We are the
We are the largest voting bloc in any community, nation, in any community and statewide. Yet, during the last elections, only 40%, 42% of educators in the state of Florida even voted. We need to stand up for what's going on in our profession, folks. You know, I'm speaking as a teacher myself now. Get out there. They will listen to the parents. They will listen to the voters. They must, because that can be a majority. But what's going on right now with board members, not only are they ignoring us, but they retaliate and punish us if we get too vocal. And I hope my comments tonight don't cause any harm to the school district. And I, and I just wanted you folks to know that we are as frustrated as you are, and I thank you for all of your comments tonight. Madam Chairman.
I just want to add to that, Karen, just one comment, that I was at the FSBA meeting on Friday to find out about what legal stings they were involved in, about what the options were for opt-out. I'm going to be presenting some of that during board report. But when Dr. Murray says retaliation, she's not kidding. FSBA got a phone call from leadership. I'm not going to identify who leadership is. It's not from this county, that said if we went forward on pressing any of these initiatives, they would take our salaries. They would take our benefits. They would retaliate against us any way possible to get us to back down. So Mr. White and others, when you tell us to step forward, the people in that room said, "We're not going to be scared away," but that's the point that it's come to. We, as board members, have gone as far as we can go. You're going to hear in a resolution I bring tonight, that if they want parent choice, we're going to give them parent choice, and I have a great resolution to get it there. So please stick around.
To answer the question about the voucher program, this board does not take, does not have a position on that, and I understand the request to not join the FSBA, because FSBA unfortunately did take a position on that. However, we opted out of FSBA for a number of reasons, some of which is we felt that a lot of issues were being railroaded, and they were not listening to reason, and we wanted to send a message. Well, it appears now that the tide is turning, and there are many school boards out there that are just as upset as we are, and we're going to be rejoining, because we feel now we can change the direction of FSBA for the better, for the things that we want to accomplish on a state level. So if that's a concern to you, us joining the FSBA is a step in the direction that you want to see.
Is it my turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. I put this presentation together, because a few years ago, in 2012, I was a part of the FSBA Assessment and Accountability Task Force. Our goal was to come up with things that are wrong with the assessment and accountability system in the state of Florida, and deliver it to, and deliver it to FSBA, the governor's office, and other, and to our legislators. I worked very closely with Dr. Lynn Spataccini from our district, and we came up with some legislative changes. We ran it by the board. This is simple stuff, and some of the stuff that you were very, you were talking about tonight. Our research, we included research in our solutions. Where's the, hang on a second. Here's just one of our priorities. I don't know if you can see it. We're going to put all this stuff out on our website. We had a desire, for instance, and of course. So this is how we put the entire presentation that we gave to our legislators and everybody else. Let's say we wanted to remove the 30% grade requirement. Here's our rationale, our compromise. Okay, if you don't want to take it away completely, we're going to go 15%. Trying to work with them and provide them solutions. And we also give them the law or policy that it has to do with. We will be putting this out online. The other thing we did as part of the research is that I personally called the different states, several different states, and asked their assessment and accountability people, do they have mandatory third grade retention, mandatory ninth grade remediation? Do you allow retakes? Do you have time limits? Are you required to do it online? Do you have, and of course, what's the percentage for your end of course? Are these tests required for graduation? And do you remove funding if a child doesn't pass an end of course? So that's the kind of research, again, that'll be out online. So for the first one, is the 30% end of course. It is currently being used for algebra, biology, geometry, history, and Algebra II, and she mentioned something else. There's six of them now. We didn't believe that 30% is a good reason, is fair for children, and we didn't think it was reasonable. And not only that, the child must pass the end of course in order to graduate. The next thing was state assessments. If you move into the state of Florida, you're from Tennessee, and you come here as an 11th grader, and you took algebra in 7th grade in Tennessee, you're required to take the end of course algebra test, even though you passed the class and passed the class five years prior. That is just something that the state of Florida decides. Apparently, our tests are better than everybody else's. So we believe that the students should be enrolled at least for one year in our system before we start making them take tests. If you're a 3rd grader and you come in, in February, you're required to take our FCAT, or FCAT II, or whatever we're calling it these days. Mandatory remedial coursework. We requested this be removed as a mandatory requirement. Sometimes honor students are required to have remediations, because they come in and have a bad day on one test. And who knows better than the teachers that are closest to the students, whether there was a real need for remediation, or if this just happens to be a bad day this poor student's having. Not everybody comes to school on a day and ready to take a test. They might know that the test, the FCAT, is today, but they may not be, for whatever reason, something personal may have happened, they may not be there. So we, we need to allow them to have a retake before we make them do mandatory remedial coursework. And if they're deficient in one area, let's test them in the area that they have a problem with, and let them move on. As you can see, we put it out there as no compromise on this particular item, because we don't feel that mandatory remediation is in the best interest of children. Grade automatic retention. Again, we feel that there's no way that you should automatically retain students. Oh, sorry. Sometimes there's a, there's a good reason to retain a student, and we all understand that. But research indicates that the more times you retain a student, the greater chance they're going to drop out of school. And there's a lack of evidence that shows that retained students have a long-term academic success. And the list goes on. Retaining a student due to one test on one day is not reasonable. Again, we do not think this is in the best interest of children, and this is the information that we gathered and gave to our legislators. Time limits. Increase the time limits to take the assessments. Currently, they're about 70 minutes in the state of Florida. If you look at the other spreadsheet that I put together, you'll see that some tests, some states allow tests to be taken all day, some take four hours, and some are at least nice enough to add another 20 minutes. You know, some kids, when you give them a time limit, that creates anxiety. Are we trying to test kids for what they know, or for what they know in a particular amount of time? Again, we had no compromise on this, because we do not see this as being in the best interest of students. And again, retakes. Why not allow, when I talked about mandatory remediation, why not allow a child to take the test again if they did bet on it one day? There's nothing wrong with that. Yeah, it would cost the state a little bit of money to allow kids who failed to take it another time, but you know what? So what? It would be in the best interest of students. And also, a better use of resources. So what did we do with this information? We provided our priorities to the FSBA and to the governor's office. I spoke personally with the governor's office on several occasions. We met with our Brevard delegation as a whole. We gave them this entire presentation and all the, all the research that had been done, and said, "Look, these are easy changes. These are easy fixes." You know, take away the time limits, the remediation. Those aren't difficult things to do, but all of them would be good for kids. We participated in legislative days, and we met with state education committee leaders. So we went up to Tallahassee, and the heads of the education committees, and we met with them. We met with the members of those committees, and we said, "Hey, these are some easy things that can be done. Can you help us out here?" Well, it didn't work. And it wasn't for a lack of trying. And all of us had been up there, and Dr. Bingley as well. The only thing that has occurred is that they delayed the implementation of removing funding. Florida is the only place that will remove funding if you don't pass an end of course, meaning your child is in class all year long, passes the class, doesn't pass the EOC, they take the funding away for that hour of class that they, who does that? But what they did was they delayed it until 16, 17. So maybe, as we all work together on this, we can get them to take that out of there, because even if a child doesn't pass a test, a district should be paid for teaching them all year long. And all the other recommendations that we made, the six priorities that we said, were largely ignored. Oh, this delay in implementation was for algebra, and of course, I want to make sure that I get that out. Algebra I, yes, not Algebra II. So what has happened since? Now, this was 2012. Well, in the meantime, the DOE made testing changes, and of course, you heard a lot about all the changes from Dr. Schaefer tonight, and she was in here talking about this a few years ago. The cut scores were increased, making it more difficult for your children and our students to succeed. And then they changed the writing requirements. They went from two testers down to one, and then back up to two, because they decided if only one person could test, could grade the test, maybe that wasn't right. So they did get that right. They put it back to two, but they changed all the requirements for writing. They gave the students, the teachers and administrators, the information on what would be on the writing portion of the test in February, and those students were required to take the test in March. And so no teachers, no students, nobody knew what was going to be on the test, and things did not go so well. In the meantime, our legislators have required that all students in high school have to take an online class. But they can't take an online class someplace else. They have to take an online class in our schools, if they want to. They can take it at home, but we have to have labs for all the students. In our district alone, just to create the labs required for online testing in all of our high schools, it cost us $800,000 for the infrastructure, and $400,000 for the recurring cost to man the classrooms, because you can't have 35 kids, or 30 kids, or 25 kids in a classroom without having somebody in there, so you have to have an assistant. They did this. This unfunded mandate was done at the exact same time that they removed 25% of our capital funding. The other thing that you need to know about this, as we're going forward and talking about this, is that laws are written in May. That's when they get signed by the governor. The process starts, but it comes to fruition in May, and the effective dates on all of this is July 1, every year since I've been here. The other thing that the legislature has done is they've changed the grading requirements incrementally. They have increased every year since 2009. If you look at the law, which is listed there, it's written, as you go down, it says, "If your 9th grader starts, if you're not, if you're entering 9th grade in 2010, here's your requirements. 2011, here's your graduation requirements. 2012, 2013, and 2014." Right now, every single one of our high school cohorts, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th grade, have different graduation requirements. I have two kids in high school this year. I have a 9th grader, and I have a 12th grader. My 12th grader took algebra in 7th grade and didn't have to take the end of course. Had to take the end of course, but it wasn't counted for 30% of her grade. My 9th grader, it counted as, when she was in 7th grade, it counted for 30% of her grade. Last year, geometry, 30% of her grade. This year, biology and Algebra II will be 30% of her grade. On top of the fact that we are adding new course requirements for these kids, economics, hope, career research, decision-making, civics, all these new classes that even my oldest, only three years older, didn't have to do. So we are really ramping it up on these younger kids, and if you're caught in the middle of this, it's really unfortunate. And then, of course, we have our latest and greatest, or not so greatest, changes, coming in the form of, which was alluded to earlier, the end of course tests, for every grade level and every content area. This is not because it is good for children. This is only so the state can garner some measure to evaluate teachers. So it's not even about your kids. It's about evaluating teachers, and you ought to be outraged about it. And we all need to be standing up together and fighting this. We don't even have three years of VAM scores on the current state standardized tests, yet we're going to do end of course tests on everything and hold teachers accountable. I would argue that there is no value added to your child's education in this experiment. We have had little support for creating the test, and every district is scrambling to get these tests done. It's going to cost millions of dollars. It's going to top, take many, many thousands of hours of man-hours. In Brevard alone, we have 800 different courses that need to be created. The real question for me is, will all of these tests be 30% of your child's grade, like everything else, like the end of course tests are? I certainly hope not, but we don't know. The superintendent's organization got together, and they worked collaboratively to combat the implementation of end of course testing for every class. They identified unrealistic deadlines for the end of course, noting that the lack of infrastructure, we don't even have the infrastructure to implement this, or the funding to do so, and there's no funding to support the testing. And the fact that the teacher evaluations will be from tests that have not been validated and known to be reliable will create more mistrust. So the superintendent's organization proposed a solution to the governor and the legislator that would realign and revamp the accountability system, creating a realistic transition. Let's make it simple. Let's ease into this. Let's think about it. Making an implementation date for them in the future. But like I said before, if it's done in May, it's implemented July 1st. In essence, the superintendent's organization was informing them that this plan of immediacy was not going to work. Dr. Bingley specifically met with our delegation on December of 2013, and he said, "You have legislated by 2014, 15, half of the teacher's evaluation and corresponding pay for performance must be paced, based on student test results. When you realize that only a third of our teachers had value added based on FCAT scores, you legislated that teachers can only be evaluated based on measured performance of every student they teach." Oops, I did that wrong. "The problem is there are no valid and reliable assessments. With the ever-changing commissioners, school districts have been left out there creating assessment practices and instruments, all different, non-validated, to have the same value-added methodology that was applied to, to a state test. As I stand here today," he says, "we don't even know what the state test will be next year. We have a mess that, on the near horizon, that will make the school grades debacle look minor. Superintendents want, don't want to avoid accountability and quality teacher evaluation. Our concern is that the lack of realistic and strategic approach will waste the significant and positive work that has been done in both." and positive work that has been done in both." So, where do we go from here? So, as you can see, we have been working on this. We have been trying. So, our mission now is to ensure that children are first on all educational matters. Local control needs to be restored to ensure that locally, teachers and administrators make the decisions on what happens to our students. We need, as Dr. Murray said, we need the community to be engaged and we're going to help. You need to be engaged in the laws being written and the ones being changed and ensure everybody understands what the impact is. All changes need to be funded. We will provide a platform via the internet to provide necessary information to our community and ways they can help in the legislative process. And we will be bringing to the public information on what the Florida legislative process is because when you go to legislative days, it's too late. It's nice to go up there and talk and remind them that you're here fighting for a cause, but pretty much the decisions have been made. We will continue to provide legislative priorities to parents and community, state organization, the FSBA, the FADS, PTOs, FEAs, BFT. We're going to get out there the relevant information so that we can all work together to inform our legislators. State education committee members need to know what's going on and we need to inform them. And the governor's office, we need to get there too. We need to remind them that every, remind everyone that children must be first in all legislative matters. We will connect with Fund Education. I've already connected with them. They are a education advocacy group that has done really good things because they have a lot of people following it. And they've had success in changing and deferring legislation. So, we want to piggyback on them and help them get us organized so that if we're all talking the same language all across the state, we're going to have a better opportunity to make changes. But let's be clear. We believe in standards, assessments, and accountability. But this, what I've been talking about, is not about the standards. It's about an accountability system that is broken. You can see that the priorities put forth by Brevard Public Schools to reduce the impact on students and testing have gone unignored. Yet, our legislators continue to impose changes that are just not good for kids. I challenge everyone here, everyone who is concerned about quality education for Brevard County students, to join us in these efforts to create positive change, beginning with our accountability system. And also, I wanted to mention that Florida Today will be doing an article on this on Sunday. And she has talked to teachers, the assessment people, the superintendent, and the board chair. So, we have all talked about this issue earlier this week and there will be an article out on Sunday. Thank you for your time. Oh, wait, I take that back. I do take that back. I'm sorry. I've been on the board for six years. These are the legislation changes just to education. Just to education.
Going over that stuff is probably the most concerning thing we ever do because it's always a slap in the face to read those changes and then figure out how to work around that. Great presentation. I do want to add something that it is very important to understand where these problems come from so we can work together to solve them. Bob White, you were absolutely right that we need to constantly be speaking to our legislators and we need to be doing it as a community. Unfortunately, the typical approach is blame those that you're closest to or that are closest to speak to, which typically is the board. So, we get blamed for all of these problems that are going on and rather than us working together to get them changed at the state. And I hope everybody realizes, we've been working on them. We've done probably a poor job of letting people know that we've been working on them, but I think everybody hopefully knows now. And we need to work together to get these things changed. We're not happy with the testing. And I believe that the tide is changing in the state from what I'm hearing from other school board members across the state, that we stand a chance of getting the state to listen at this point in time.
With a break.
Yes, Ms. Neese.
Because I know several of these people will leave if we break. I just want to read because it kind of concludes everything you said about the resolution that's up for... Can I just read the resolution that I wanted to bring tonight? This is the one that was up for debate at FSBA and the one, one of the main reasons why I want to come back into FSBA is the resolution states as follows. FSBA, take necessary action to, number one, compel the state to adopt a comprehensive opt-out policy that would allow parents to have their students be excused without penalty from participating in statewide standardized or state-required assessments. Period. Number two, compel the state to bring an immediate halt to the practice of using statewide standardized or state-required assessment results for any purpose other than diagnostic purposes. So, parent choice, we've done about any, all that we can do as a school board. This state has been all about parent choice and parent rights. To me, this is taking it to the final degree. Let you, the parents, choose whether you want your children to participate in this standardized debacle or not.
Oh, wait, now I have to open my book to see where we are. Hang on.
Can we take a break?
Yes, we are. Just a second. Okay, we're going to take a video break. Okay?
Where would I be today if I hadn't had that education that I received in Brevard County? We need to stop for a moment and think, "How did we get where we are today?" And it started with education. It started with kindergarten and first grade and all the way through. And if we don't support our kids getting the same kind of education we did, we fail them. It's the quality of education we want them to have because their future starts when they go to school every day. In Brevard, we really do a good job. And I think one of the biggest things you can look at is the athletic programs in Brevard. And they've been there a long time. I know because I played in them when I was in school here. But I think that is a real strength, that we have great athletic programs because there's a lot that comes out of there that you don't get in the classroom in terms of commitment and to doing the best you can do. And young men and women learning about leadership because that's where you can learn it quite well. I was the quarterback on the football team my senior year. I was the catcher on the baseball team. I was the point guard on the basketball team. And when you think about what I just described, every one of those are leadership positions. The preparation that starts in schools goes a long way in the military. And that's the reason it has become more of a requirement that they have a good educational background to come in the military. For one thing, the military is very sophisticated this day and time. We need to educate our young men and women because they can't go into the military without a good, solid education because they won't make it. If you want to get promoted, you better have a good education. And I was so blessed to have some really good teachers. One of my math teachers that taught calculus, wonderful lady, but hard as she could be on us. But I really understood what she wanted us to do was to learn. As I look back at the education I received and the teachers I had, they challenged me. They didn't make it easy. And that's the way we were taught. I would ask that everyone understand that we need those kind of teachers today. His education was all right here in Brevard County. And now, he is at UCF. He, that Bright Futures support because he did really well. So, that's a credit to the system that we have in Brevard County. And he's doing very well. Someone I'm very proud of. He has a brother that will turn 18 here in just a few days and he just graduated from Mel High. He was the quarterback on the football team. He was in that leadership position. And now, he'll be getting ready to go to college this next fall. And it looks like it'll be at a small college in Arkansas and possibly play football there. I have a four-year-old grandson that lives in Palm Bay. I have a three-year-old granddaughter that lives right here in Rockledge. I have a six-month-old granddaughter in Rockledge. Their future is what I am most concerned about. I'm concerned because if we don't provide quality education for them, they have no future. And quality education is not something that just happens accidentally. Believe it or not, I actually played in the band when I was at Clear Lake Junior High School. I played clarinet, as a matter of fact. I would hate any of those programs to go away. And it wasn't that I ended up, you know, doing it for a career or anything, but boy, it sure did challenge me and I really enjoyed it. I know it benefits the residents even if they don't have kids because if we're giving them a quality education, they've got a better chance of contributing to society in the future, which means we teach them now how to be good young men and women. And we challenge them through education to do that. That's what we should be looking at. We want them to be able to contribute every day to the future of Brevard County, the future of our great country, and we do that through education. future of our great country, and we do that through education.[110.11]
There is the potential that damage could be worse, obviously. So I will tell you, I think there will be a day that we're going to have to look at that. Remember, our deductibles in 2004 were better than they are now. And Mark Langdorff has done a phenomenal job in working with our health. We are protected against the 100-year storm. We have better deductibles than, and we have by far than a lot of our neighboring districts. And he can share with you that. I only say that to tell you, there will come a day that we will come before you and say, "We think we need to look at that." But that day is not today because we really have to make sure our health insurance trust is where we need it to be. And I know we're taking good steps to do that. So that's my report, my recommendation to you as it relates to that. You know, well, I will say, again, we've worked hard to tell everybody in this district, if it's not mission-critical, we're not going to spend it. We've, as, we've cut all many reserves, just like we're cutting another million four from next year's budget, always moving closer to the margin and trying to be as efficient with our dollars as we can be. And I feel that's what we're doing. Okay?
Thank you. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Dr. Krupp.
Thank you, Dr. Bingley. I have to repeat myself again. I cannot support paying for the ACT exam. That is apparent responsibility. I asked Dr. Schaefer, is there any follow-up for this particular expenditure? We ask every junior to take an ACT test that in prior years, parents would pay for if their child was college-bound or had an inclination to do so. Now, it seems that we, as a board, have taken on that responsibility, and there's no accountability. We pay for the test, but beyond that, we have owing numbers to show that how well they did on the exam. Alls we're doing is lining the pockets of the ACT vendor. Unless we have in place a way to track these students that are going into a profession that requires a college education, we should not be paying for this ACT exam. As a former principal, I can tell you that less than 50% of our college graduates go on to a level of higher learning at either a community college or Eastern Florida. Once they graduate from high school, they don't go on to a higher level of learning at the university or college level. 50%. So I'm asking you, common sense would dictate 50% of those juniors are not going on to college. Why are we paying for them to take the ACT exam? In 2011, we spent $227,568 for the ACT. In 2012, we spent $238,272. It went up by $11,000 in one year. I don't have the figure for last year, but we're projecting now, according to Dr. Bingley, that we're going to set aside $250,000, a quarter of a million dollars. I would suspect that, not suspect, but I would ask that, as a board, we consider, why not put that money into the rainy day fund, our in salaries for negotiations? We have a page of facility assessments that we cut off at line item 17 because there wasn't enough money to fund them. We're at repair at failure. Why not take that quarter of a million, even though it may sound like a pittance amount in terms of an $800-million budget? But $250,000 could go a long way in terms of safety and health renovations for restrooms, for example, item number 19, site facilities; number 20, restroom fixtures renewal; number 21, plumbing systems general. You know, and the list goes on. We have 33 items, 17 were approved, or at least are identified for the surtax funding status, but nothing after item 17. Why not put that $250,000 to work? My parents, God rest their souls, had a saying, penny wise and pound foolish. Now, I think that saying goes towards the English pound, but if you look at an English pound, it's worth more than our dollar. Penny wise and pound foolish, you get the message. We have been so frugal in cutting our budget, in cutting staff, in cutting personnel, we have nowhere else to cut. And yet, we want to spend money to pay for a test that by and large should be the parent's responsibility. Until, again, we have tracking of these students, I cannot support this. There's a greater need in salaries for negotiations. There was an article in today's paper that stated, you know, they're looking at less than 3% increase nationwide. That didn't cover the cost of living. Our teachers are going backwards in the salary schedule. And it's no wonder that it's becoming more and more difficult to find people going into this profession. Now, I have not made a survey of the College of Education here in Florida, but I would render to say that they don't have as many applicants or many people in that college as they used to have. If you ask teachers today, would they recommend their children going into this profession, they would give you a resounding no and an HE, you-know-what no. All with all the testing parameters, the VAM, you're being paid based on student scores, test scores. It's ridiculous. It's beyond ridiculous. It's absurd that we've got ourselves into this fix, but I cannot support paying for an ACT test.
Dr. Murray.
I think Dr. Krupp makes some very, I think, his points have value. Is there any way that we could track these students? Because I, you know, I have a problem with the fact that we don't have data to show that these students are actually enrolling in higher ed coursework. So with that said, it does lend itself to question the value of what we're spending.
I'm pointing out to Dr. Thetty because we did put in last year's strategic plan and outcome that was meant to try to do the best we could to track. I will tell you, 81%, Florida, 81% of the students in Florida take the ACT. It is one of the higher states, but...
But that's not the point.
No, I understand.
I know when this board began paying for it, that the company, there was some incentive. We did something that they, we piloted something, I don't recall now, it's been so long ago, it's been about eight years ago, where we were given a tremendous cost break. I see Deborah Pace coming up here on that. Oh, no. So I don't know if that has gone away. Does anybody remember what that was all about?
It was, I believe that it was being paid for. We weren't paying anything at the beginning of this.
No, I think that we were paying half.
I don't recall what it was, but it was a great deal, but then that went away. And so now, we bear the burden.
It was a 50/50. Right. So, you know, it may be time we revisit this.
Well, I, you know, we are, the interesting thing is, Dr. Bingley is right. We had this discussion at a workshop, this very discussion. Although I think that Dr. Krupp makes some very valid points, and just based on the information that we've heard tonight on testing in the state of Florida and all the changes that Dr. Schaefer said are coming, and, you know, the one thing that we do have is the constant of knowing where our kids are. And I think with the influx, the, all the changes that the state of Florida has done to, quite frankly, screw over our kids, we can't even track from members in one family to know if they're actually doing better, let alone a district as a whole. This particular test gives us a baseline that I think is valuable. I understand the cost and I understand the cost savings, but I also think that knowing where our kids are has some value. And understanding that we're doing all of them and seeing where we stand with everybody else is valuable. And again, I would also say that we had this very discussion at a workshop sitting right there. Yes.
Dr. Bingley, isn't one of the reasons we also went this route is if they, if students received a certain score on the ACT, it allowed them to be, it was another way for them to get their high school diploma.
Well, it does allow them to...
Surpass the FCAT.
Yeah, and they access scholarships. You know, I think, what is it, is it $44 million, our kids? There are certainly students that get a score on this test and our counselors get busy and find them a scholarship opportunity.
I thought, but I thought the ACT scores, if you did not pass your 10th-grade FCAT, I thought there were certain scores on the...
There, yeah. It is, it is a concordant score.
Yeah, it is.
Although they raised what you need on that from what it used to be. So it isn't as powerful as it used to be, but you're exactly right. It still remains. And we've seen, our kids have taken advantage of the ACT concordant score because they, it allowed them to demonstrate their knowledge. Dr. Thetty, I know you had some information related to tracking kids. And of course, Ms. Pace, I think, wants to talk about, we are also slated to use the ACT for our teachers who have juniors in teacher evaluation because it is a measure that we have data on, that we can be fair with them. Again, not a shot in the dark, but you know, the work John Carr has done to analyze those three years' data and give our teachers really a, who teach juniors, a quality measure that is much more fair for them, so...
Well, and I also think that, you know, one of the things that you've told us in the past is that the, that students, our students do better on the ACT. More students pass the ACT than pass our 10th-grade FCAT, too.
There have been a couple of times where, to be sure, I have shared either with the community, and as you know, like you're suggesting, I've shared with the State Board of Education. We once had a 10th-grade reading test that 38% of the kids in the state passed. 50% of the kids in Brevard passed. Way to go, Brevard. We were higher than the state, but that still meant half of our kids failed that 10th-grade reading test. But then, just months later, they took the ACT, and 60% of the kids who failed that reading test scored college-ready on a college entrance exam that measures kids all over the country. I asked the state board, it didn't please them, as you know. I mentioned it, I told them, as they were debating this, I drove two and a half hours for this two and a half minutes because what you're saying is too important for me to sit on the sidelines. And I gave them that information. They didn't appreciate it, but nonetheless, in fact, they asked, "Would you rather have the ACT?" And a bunch of superintendents behind me said, "Gosh, yes," which made them very angry. But that, again, this year, our superintendent's association asked, "Let's look at those writing scores. What's wrong?" You know, here, our kids struggle on this writing, yet they had the highest-ever performance on ACT meant to demonstrate your readiness for college composition.
Yeah, right.
So it does give, one of the things I told Ms. Ryan in the article that's going to come out Sunday, many people have lost faith, including me, in the overall Florida accountability system because it has been a moving target that no one can understand. Some of these measures that do allow our kids to be compared against kids in this country, they give us a quality measure that we can count on. I think there is value to that, I really do. And yes, I do believe there's ultimately value for some of our kids. Dr. Thetty?
We put in place a process at the end of this last school year with our graduating seniors from 2014 where I created a listserv that they can, they subscribe to. And we're going to use that to survey them as we go a year out, two years out, three years out, four years out. Of course, it's not a perfect process. It depends on whether or not their email addresses are still valid at the end of this year, that they're still checking those email addresses. But we did put a process in place that we'll refine as we move through this year with this year's graduating seniors as well.
It's ironic, in my superintendent comments at the end, I'm going to share our ACT composite score, which went way up, which was delightful.
I think, Dr. Murray.
Well, you know, with all that said, with the fact that that is the one test that we have to hang our hat on, I would certainly support that. But not only that, I think that should be an item that we band together on, to use that to replace some of the other testing that's coming out of Tallahassee. Because it is, it is a constant, but there are other tests that were used for decades at the elementary and middle school as well, in, what, NTBS, I think it was?
Stanford nine.
California.
Stanford nine.
CTBS, right, all of those. And that was in an era before all of the geniuses in the country decided that each state should create its own mess, right? And then try to compare the states across each other. So I can see the value, I can see the value of the test. But, you know, I do tend to agree, though, it is apparent, some of this is apparent responsibility. And, you know, it's just kind of a, it's a difficult topic, right?
Okay. Mr. Ziegler.
I just want to comment quickly about the technician positions. I comment on this frequently, in that there is industry standards in the number of pieces of equipment each technician should be responsible for to be able to successfully keep technology alive in an organization. And I know we're seriously behind in that ratio. And as we have to expand, especially our labs and the schools and digital techs, this is an area where we're going to have to step up to make sure we have the people there keeping this equipment going. So this is a step in the right direction. I'm glad to see we're paying attention to that need. Thank you.
Well, I will, Ms. Pace, I want to make sure you may come back here, but this really emerged out of six-day count. And you know, our principals are very good at saying, "Hey, we need another teacher unit." And in fact, how many we added? I think 41 teacher units, based on our enrollment needs and class size issues. But, but these big high school principals, just as I understand it, they made certainly a compelling, you know, and passionate plea for some support and assistance. And there really is a natural kind of break for our three biggest high schools that, you know, have that many more kids, that many more devices, that much, the burden just keeps getting larger. Is that a fair assessment of that? Ms. Pace?
Thank you, Dr. Bingley.
Thank you.
There are no additional public presentations. We are now at Board Member Report section. I would like to ask each board member to please include any information requests to be placed on the board assigned tasks during this time.
I already blew one out, it's enough time.
I would like to take this opportunity to ask Ms. Preston to provide us some information on FSBA committees, or maybe, do we need to do something with that?
Ms. Preston.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, with the legislature.
Yeah.
Until we're not, until they get our check, we're not a member.
Okay, so we can't do anything on that? We can't be proactive on it in any way?
Nope.
Okay.
Next board.
All right. I already did my report. Yay, you. Any other board? Ms. Neese.
I already showed this mailing card to all of you, but I asked Pam for this card to be put on Board Reports. I want to know how this mailing was approved, how the items got on there, and what the process was. I'll give it to you after the meeting, but I've already talked to, talked to Gino, I talked to Michelle, and I talked to Dr. Bingley, but I want a full investigation of this, please.
Mr. Ziegler? You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. 30 seconds and counting is going to be the fastest I've ever spoke. Central Florida School Board Coalition is a group of 10 school districts that meet on a monthly basis to discuss issues that are of concern to these, to each of the school districts. And we, I am the sitting member on that right now. We met yesterday, and I wanted to report some of the things that were discussed so that we know that there are other districts that share these concerns, one of which was, is that there, the ELL waiver from the federal government was denied, which basically is to say that they're requiring that ELL students are tested after a year, which this could be a student that doesn't speak English at all, and then to test them on standards, just as we feel that's all ridiculous, all the, all the districts feel that way. We're looking for a two-years waiver. Interestingly enough, I found out that most states' waiver was granted. And so there's confusion as to why they would not grant this to Florida, but they did to other states. And I was, if I heard correctly, the governor, actually, the governor's office is on board writing a letter to see if Arnie Duncan will consider us. I don't know what our options are. The most of the conversation yesterday, interestingly enough, stemmed around end-of-course exams. There are, all the districts are very much in arms about this, and I'm not going to get into a lot of details because we spoke about a lot of those.
Excuse me. You're talking about the new end-of-course exams, rather than the state end-of-course exams.
Right, that have not been completed and may not be completed for a while. And one thing I wanted to add in conjunction with that, that somebody brought to my attention, interestingly enough, is that there's a, I think we need to look into this because I'm curious if, although we're required to do this, if this is actually a violation of statute by giving these exams. Relevant to Senate Bill 7009, which states that full implementation of online assessments, specifically they're referring to next-generation sunshine standards in English, language arts, math, and all K-12 public school students occur only after technology, infrastructure, connectivity, and capacity of all public schools is load-tested and independently verified as ready for successful deployment and implementation of testing. And that's, this is Senate Bill 7009, and I'm thinking from my technology perspective, oh my God, what an amazing task that would be to load-test all of our infrastructure to make sure that it's going to run smoothly when we provide these tests, not to mention the fact we don't have enough technology and infrastructure really to do this, so...
I think Gino just grabbed his heart.
Gino just fell over in his chair. So have, you know, are we violating a statute by not complying with that? That was quite a revelation when somebody showed me that. So I won't get into that. Another topic that was brought up is that there's going to be a new standard charter school contract, which is not based on the existing contract at all. It's a completely new contract. And the school districts are supposed to have collaborative input on this. We had none, all school districts report. They were not contacted to put any input into this, although apparently charter schools were consulted on this. We are allowed to redline, add, remove to the contract, but if the charter school doesn't agree, we have to go back to the original contract, which, so what's the point? What's the point in that? And I asked the question about renewals, and that this also applies to renewals. So a lot of interesting problems on the horizon with charters. And so it was very interesting, it was actually the longest, Dr. Bingley, you chose a better day to go do something for our community than to sit through that long conversation of all of these issues that all these school board districts are very much up in arms about, as are we. So that's my report on that. The next thing I want to report on is, I wanted to bring up, which everybody knew I would be bringing up, is, you know, we all applaud Lee County for taking a stand on an issue, just as we did back with the history textbook, which does apply to Common Core. And, but, you know, as much as we would like to do away with some of the things that angst us around here, including testing, we need to ask a lot of questions because there are ramifications from making decisions like these. We often speak about our legislators making decisions for education that have negative impacts when implemented down on our level. And I think the worst thing we could do is be hypocrites and do the same thing of making a decision without knowing the ramifications of that decision. And so in thinking through this, and I think we all know a lot of the questions, but our community is very concerned about this topic of whether or not we can opt out for Common Core. And I think we need to give them some of the answers to what it would look like and what challenges are before us. One right off the top of my head is, of course, because of the history textbook, is what will it cost us to replace textbooks? We know for the history textbook, it was $400,000 for one book in one grade. And if we have to do that in 10 grades, that's $4 million. If we have to do five books in each of 10 grades, it's over $20 million. Is that even an affordable option to us to change textbooks, or could we use the existing textbooks? I believe that there's some legislation out there that, some statutes that will answer this question is accreditation at risk such that student diplomas don't make them eligible for college. And I believe, Doc, I'm sorry, Ms. Neese, you provided a document of, I almost gave you a doctorate there. We get that once in a while. You can keep that for a day anyhow. That, there was a document that you sent out that I think we should make available to our community that has some research in how some various statutes affect students in different grades. And what the ramifications...
I sent it to Mackenzie Ryan, it'll be a part of her article.
Okay. I think it's in our folder, isn't it, also? It's in our...
It needs to go on our webpage.
It needs to go on. And this will tell the community, some of the statutes that we would, we would be violating if we, well, not necessarily violating, but some of the things we couldn't accomplish, student promotions, graduations, and we'd have to figure out how to get around that. What is the punitive damages from the state? What would they hold back? And that's also addressed in here, not explicitly, but it would be nice to know what type of funding that could be held, which is state and federal, according to the answers in here, which is, and I believe in here, we also said, all Title I funding. Will we have to recreate all of our end-of-course exams that we're, that we're just about to, well, hopefully, we'll finish by the end of the year? And what is that going to cost to recreate the end-of-course exams? And I'm sure there are more questions that we have, but of course, we need a plan. As somebody said very interestingly this morning, you know, if we all quickly decide to jump off a cliff, are we going to make a plan on how to land on the way down? I don't think that would be a great idea. So we need a plan as to, if we could do this, what would the alternative standards be? And how are we going to test and measure this? What is our accountability system going forward? So it would be, and I know this is not something that staff has the capacity to do in any short order, but it'd be nice to see if we can have a report back on what the, what this would look like so that our community, who's so passionate about this, can say, are they willing to step off this cliff? Or are they at least willing to step up and help us convince the state? Maybe this will be part of how we convince the state, what type of a situation they've got us into. I don't know if any other board members have thought of any other questions that we need to have answered, but I know that in order to satisfy our community, we need to explain to them what they're asking to go forward. And I'm sure, you know, I'm all for taking the step if we have solutions to taking that step.
Are you for him, are you for him looking at into all those answers? For him looking into it?
Nobody else has anything on that topic? I'm, that's all I have to say is that, but I would like to have an outline for our community.
Okay.
It's pretty clear-cut. It's pretty clear-cut, but...
For us to look into and consider, I think it's pretty clear-cut on that page why our hands are tied. The only thing that would untie our hands would be if all 67 counties would move in the same direction as an entire state unit.
It was Ms. Neese's suggestion.
But to have Singleton Counties, no way. Is that going to work?
Which is why the parent opt-out option, to me, is the best way to go.
Right. You know, I'm not sure that there's, you know, I think, looking at that paper, putting it online, I think when you look at what this says, it's pretty clear. And I'm sure that Harold wouldn't advise us to go down that path.
I understand that.
Based on, you read that, right?
I did read it. I did, I did review the statutes that are cited, and I think they write on the money about what the ramifications would be if nothing changes.
I mean, we've been locked in. We've been locked in, which is why I say we build a different box. That's why I say it needs to come from the parents, and we have the parents do it. That's right.
Okay, anybody else? Dr. Krupp?
Yes, League of Cities met last night, and as the board representative, I want to report to you that Wayne Ivey, our sheriff, was the guest speaker. He's very passionate and very strong-hearted about the different things that are happening. He did mention the fact that come October, they will be taking over the security for the port. Also, they have taken over the shelters for animals. And he mentioned that it was probably only one of the first times that they got a 5-0 vote from the county commissioners for him to do that. He's actually saving the county commissioners probably a half a million dollars by doing that. And he said that he estimated that he was saving the port a good $500,000 in one year, and then next year, probably an estimated $1 million in school security expenditures for what they were spending on right now. But the big thing that he wanted to hammer across to all of the constituents with the League of Cities is that every person that is of voting age needs to get themselves educated about Amendment II. That's the language that deals with medical marijuana. That's the language that deals with medical marijuana. He said if Colorado and Washington State could put that bullet back in the gun, they would do that and take that language out. They have seen in those two states the number of vehicular traffic incidences, people under the influence. He did state that if it does pass, that all of the drug dogs in Florida will be null and void because they're all trained to scent marijuana. And so all a person would have to do is wave that little physician's certificate saying that they're eligible, and the drug dogs are null and void. He mentioned that the rules are very vague, to the point of almost no rules for Amendment II. He mentioned that, for example, a doctor's prescription could be given for as slight as something that you can't sleep at night. And so someone would tell the doctor, I can't sleep at night, and they would write a script for marijuana. He also mentioned that the dispensaries, there's very little language that controls the dispensaries. Yes, in the production or the growing of it, that, that has some safeguards, but not in the dispensing of it. And he mentioned the fact that if you look at what Colorado has done with legalizing it statewide, I mean, you can go into a dispensary, and they have probably 10 or 15 jars with different categories, different flavors. They're adding candy flavors to it, you know, it's gotten to the point of being absurd. But he said, the biggest thing is, if it does pass, it has grave implications for any employer. Because an employee can have that script on them and be under the influence while they're working on the job. And I hate to say that we would have teachers that would do that very thing. I don't know that for a fact, but I'm just, I'm saying, I hate to say that we would have... So it puts every employer on the spot in terms of medical marijuana, and when it's used, and when you can't use it. So that was the big thing. He said, he can, he knows that he's not going to vote for it, but he said he can't tell us how to vote, but he said he would ask that everyone educate themselves about the language that is out there now for Amendment II.
Thank you, Dr. Krupp. Dr. Murray?
I just had an epiphany on that, though. It brought back memories of 20 years ago when I was a principal in a neighboring district, and a young man brought a bottle of O'Doul's in his lunch. And O'Doul's is by law non-alcoholic. And the way the school district policies were written at that time, we could not do anything about that. So given consideration to what Dr. Krupp is saying, we probably ought to start looking at our policies, you know, to the extent that we're going to have to do interrevising and...
We ought to already request that.
And our student conduct codes and so forth.
I can, I can inform the board that a bunch of us have done that. We have got together once. We're going to do it some more. And we have looked at those.
Okay. Is there anything else? The only thing I have is that, Dr. Bingley and board members, we need to do a strategic plan meeting here pretty quick, so everybody check their calendars and get with Pam, and we'll give you a couple of dates to look at. Other than that?
Superintendent report.
Oh, superintendent, oh, you do have a report. God, and I thought I was...
I actually do. And, you know, there's been so much, there's a lot of dialogue. And I am going to come back to, to a couple measures for our kids because I do think they're important. Through it all, we've, we've stayed on mission. We have great, great teachers, great principals, great people in schools. I mentioned that I did want to touch on the ACT. Our kids did have a composite score increase from 20.5 to 20.8. That's a big increase for the composite score. Florida stayed at 19.6. Remember, we, we do give the test to all of our kids. There's primarily college-bound. There are 14 states, there are 12 states that give the ACT to every student. 14 states that give it to 90-plus percent. Their composite average in those 14 states is 19.9. Our kids is 20.8. It's the largest gap that our kids have ever had between us and the state average. And we are closing in on the national average for our kids. Now, why is that important? Well, some large states, Pennsylvania, 19% of their kids, Maryland, 22, New York, 27, Virginia, 28, California, 29, Texas, 40%, Indiana, 40%. So our kids are, are competing, when you look at that, against what would be the best and brightest in some of the biggest states in the country. And the fact that our kids are closing in on their national average is an incredible piece of data. And again, one that does allow us to be, have some constancy that we haven't had. While, while, you know, the state keeps telling us we're doing worse in this, or, you know, nobody knows, this measure keeps getting better. Another measure that I just shared with you via email, but I, and I mentioned, I want to mention this, our industry certification. We have done a great job, and I always say this is not your daddy's shop class, but, but some of it is your daddy's shop. We have auto tech, we have building trades. Our kids get industry credentials that, that give them opportunity for meaningful work. But we also have SolidWorks, a program that engineers you chief architect. There's a, there's a diverse set of industry certification that is very meaningful for our kids. In 2009, we had 1,850 kids take these tests with a 55% pass rate. Now, I've been sharing with everybody that last year, in '13, we had 3,513. You see how many presentations I made because I'm not looking at any paper? 3,513 with a 76% pass rate. Janice Schultz just gave us yesterday, for last year, we had 4,140 industry certification tests, a 77% pass rate. Now, what that means for our kids is they are armed with something that works for them at a four-year institution, works for them, quite frankly, at Eastern Florida State College and others, and/or puts them right into entry positions. Heritage High School now has the only kids in Florida that have, I forget what the name of it is, but it's from the environmental water technology. It is in a certificate that's an immediate living wage. All right? Now, but beyond that, as you know, the state of Florida does still incentivize us. If our kids are successful, we get bonus FTE. So yes, we paid $265,000 last year for our young people to take these industry certification tests. And do you know how much their success brought back to us? Because they are passing these tests at a rate that are far beyond what is seen in most of the rest of the state. So when we talk about, should there be more than what, than state mandate? Yes, there should be. And we have constantly kept our finger on the pulse of knowing that our children have an opportunity to attack excellence in, in whatever it is that they want to pursue. And so we're, we're very proud of this measure, and I just wanted to make sure that I, I thought tonight was a fitting night to bring that forward.
I think that's an excellent report. I think it's interesting that 77% pass these things that aren't state-mandated tests that can actually get them a living wage, which is far better than the FCAT. And, you know, much better for kids. We have to actually wonder what the value is of these other standardized tests. I think, I think that, that your numbers actually show that there is another way that we can measure our kids for success. So is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Meeting is adjourned.